Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the city council meeting for October 15th, 2019. Can I get a roll call, please?
Yes, Councilmember Mann?
Here.
Councilmember Sternquist is absent. Councilmember Yu is absent. Mayor Protem Chavez?
Here.
Mayor Fish?
Here.
I'll make a motion to excuse Councilmember Yu and Sternquist.
Second.
Thank you. Would everyone please stand? We are going to have Pastor Jim Walden lead us in our invocation. He is from Temple City First Baptist Church. And please remain standing. Mr. Jerry Jambezen is going to afterwards will lead us in the flag slip. Thank you.
Good evening. Let's pray. Father, thank you again for the United States of America. Love this country, this state, and this city. And Father, thank you that we have a government that is by the people and for the people, that we are a land that knows peace, and we ask for your wisdom and your knowledge. I'm so grateful for the city council and everyone represented on it. I ask you, give them wisdom, and Lord, help us to accomplish what is best for everybody in this city. Thank you that you love this town. We look forward to a great night in Jesus' awesome name. Amen.
Amen.
Please place your right hand over your heart and pledge with me your allegiance to the greatest flag in the world. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Jim. Thank you. Thank you, Jerry. We're going to go ahead and move on to ceremonial matters. We have a presentation from the Temple City Library Interior Artistic Enhancement Update. I would like to introduce Ms. Louise Griffin. She is our artistic consultant to provide us with an update.
Mayor Fish and members of the council. Ms. Griffin is going to present the concept that's been approved by the county and what we've been raising funds for, and Councilmember Sternquist has been leading that effort. This is a -- Ms. Griffin has extensive experience with the county library system, has done many artistic enhancements and public art throughout the county library system, is working very closely with the architect Eric Marr. You had a presentation by Bill Yee and Pat McGee a couple meetings ago. Bids are out. Bids are going through their review process right now with the county. This is one other element of that. We went through a pretty rigorous process of working with the county to meet their goals, their standards. Both Ms. Griffin and the illustrator that you -- that will be presented today, well, you'll see with some of the panels that Ms. Griffin will go over, is also a county-approved artist, has some other works that she's worked with, with the county. So we're very excited about the presentation today. So with that, Ms. Griffin.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. As -- that was my intro, basically, so we're going to have to skip over the first slide here.
If you could just move a little closer or bring that up a little bit.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, there you go.
How's this?
Thank you.
Okay. So, thank you, Brian, for my first slide there. We'll move on to the second one. "The library is an arena of possibility, opening both a window into the soul and a door onto the world." This is a quote by Rita Dove, poet laureate consulate in poetry to the Library of Congress. And this quote really resonated with me because I believe that the -- in the power of the library as a place for the community, and it is an honor to be able to be part of creating something for the new, newly renovated Temple City Library. So the concept for the artwork began with a conversation with Councilmember Sternquist. She presented some images of artwork that she found inspiring. She showed images of oversized books, a framed entry or a portal into an area of the library. She showed the artwork that was both inspirational but educational and appealed to an audience of all ages. We also had a conversation with the architect who explained all the exciting new program that would be in the newly renovated library, and therefore, the artwork needed to be mounted on the ceiling because the new, new program was, was taking up the floor space. These are some images that Councilmember Sternquist showed of ceiling-mounted examples of artwork. And then the last consideration was understanding or the inherent or understanding the existing building and also the new design. The building has an inherent logic, and understanding that and working with it lets the artwork naturally fit in versus being forced into, into the space. So they -- here, the ideas of Councilmember Sternquist, that the artwork needed to be ceiling-mounted and understanding the, the new design in the existing building, I thought about, or something that emerged for a concept was the accordion book. And the accordion book is unique from a typical book in that it doesn't have a start and a finish, or a page one and the last page. It can be understood from many different, from the, from many different directions. And knowing that the way in which people would move through the library would be organic versus a linear, the accordion book seemed like a good idea as a sculptural element because there wasn't a start and a finish, but it, it flowed in any direction. Next became thinking about material. And acrylic was a, was a good material because it's, it's very colorful, it has really bright shadows, as bright as the material itself is, and it is inherently lightweight, which is a good thing when, when everything has to be hung from the ceiling. So knowing that, that the accordion book and pieces of acrylic, the, the concept emerged of let the adventure unfold. And this adventure is a series of unfolding books placed within the library. This next slide, I know it's kind of small, but this shows the areas of which, of where these, these books would be hung. So on the left, this is a reflected ceiling plan. On the left is in the family place. Then we move towards the middle in the children's area, on the other side of the, the front door in the teens, and then in the adults. So now that we have these unfolding books, it seemed only logical to want to fill some of the pages with illustrations and with stories. And when we came up with the idea of that, we knew we needed to, that something that was, was unique to Temple City and to the County of Los Angeles Library, things that were that, that visitors would be able to look up and recognize from their community and also be able to identify with. So we, the collaboration with illustrator Cherie Miller, she is a accomplished illustrator and author. She's published six books, and her forthcoming book is on Michelle Obama's garden and coming out in 2020. You can see, these are a few of her sketches from previous projects. She works, she does a lot of work with children. She is, her work is all-inclusive. It celebrates diversity and encourages and celebrates the inquisitive nature particularly of children. So these next few slides are illustrations that we've, that we've worked for the pages of the accordion book. You see on the, on the left is the Camilla Festival. On the right is a library storytime. This next one is friends enjoying the library and the books. And on the right is craft time at the library. And these next two, that's VR lab for teens and a maker space or STEM where they're learning to code and, and build robots. And here we have the Mahjong game and a concert, oh, concert in the, this is the wrong slide, yoga in the park. And then these next slides are images of the illustrations rendered onto the books or pages. Storytime on the left, Camilla Festival on the right. This is a community garden on the left and teen study group on the right. The one on the left has multiple ones that you could see, which you'll be able to see in, in the actual space. And then the left has the teen VR lab. So the next component of the artwork, which was also important, was the entry into the family place and the children's area, and that is a sculptural that you would cross over into the, the family. So we knew that it would have a relationship to the art, but be slightly unique. This here is if you're standing right after you move, you walk into the library and you're turning to go into the children's and to the family place. It is the, the same material, but their books on their side, and then characters from the illustration either hanging off of a page or sitting on a page. And the concept for the artwork, let the adventure unfold, is also what it is when each time someone goes into the library, that, that it's a new adventure and what they discover and uncover as they, as they go into the library. So the last part of the artwork are the donor bricks. And the bricks are the same size as the bricks of the building, but of the material of the artwork with the name of the donor and their message etched onto the brick and then hung inside of the brick so that it's one family all, all together in the library. So to conclude, the library artwork is an adventure unfolding for both its visitors and the characters found within its pages. And we're really excited for the venture to unfold in the new year. Thank you.
Can you, maybe, Brian, you can refresh our recollection where the bricks are going to be going?
Right now, that still --
Or that had not been determined.
There's, there's a couple locations that --
It's not going to be in the library.
They will be, they actually will be in the library, in the library itself so that to meet, as Ms. Griffin talked about, have continuity between the artwork itself and the recognition wall. It didn't seem conducive to do anything like a brick layered outside of, of the building itself.
The bricks are going to be on a wall inside the library? And I'm hoping that we get a good response to that, and what if we get too many bricks?
We talked about that as well, and so for, right now, we're actually in pretty good shape with the amount of donations we've received so far, but it won't, you won't see kind of like an empty wall that has spaces. But we did build enough room in for, as people want to continue to donate to the artwork, they can continue to do that.
And I noticed on the example where it has Sternquist's family and then there's a little quote under it, is that going to be available to everyone?
Yeah, that's going to be available to everybody. We're still working on a few logistics related to that as well, related to cost, but we'll be, we'll, we'll, we'll be figuring that out over the next couple months as we've been doing the fabrication and working. Louise has been really great to work with in trying to find cost-effective ways of doing stuff and making it all happen.
And just so the public knows, are we still taking orders for bricks? And how much are they?
They were $150. We, I think we'll have to kind of go back and see what, what else we can do. We won't refuse anybody's money going forward, but we will kind of go back out there again and see what we can do.
At the same $150?
Did you have any questions?
Yes, I do. Thank you. In terms of the, by the way, thank you for the great presentation.
Thank you.
It's very exciting to see the concepts actually before our eyes, because I was trying, I was having a hard time visualizing what was actually going to be in the space.
Yeah.
In terms of the extent of the interior design and art component, will there be additional elements beyond what is presented today, or is this sort of the extent of what we should expect?
At the moment, this is the extent. There's 23 of these, and I should, I missed my little, my own cue I'd given myself. I had a page here to help give scale. This is a blue page.
Oh.
So they're, they're not small.
Wow.
Yes, absolutely.
You're not in court, so you're okay.
So this is one of the pages. They're 24 by 36, and they're mounted at the ceiling. The ceiling is 1210, so it's pretty high. But they're not, they're not small. There's 23 books each that have anywhere between six and nine pages.
Oh, wow.
So it's a lot, a lot of books. And then within these pages are the sto, are the stories or the --
Oh, so, so these drawings would pick up that entire panel?
That's just one.
Oh, wow.
That's just one. Page of one book. So, so they're not, they're, but it's also because of the height that they're mounted, you're sort of working with the perspective of somebody looking up at 12 feet.
Oh, I see.
So if they were smaller, they, you're sort of for, you're, it's more important when you're looking up at them.
Right, right, right.
That's the reason for the size.
Okay. Yeah, because initially, I, I thought these might be angled, so when you're looking up, you could see it. But I guess with them being that large, you'd be able to --
Yeah, instead of the angle, they're just --
They're just larger. Okay.
Yeah.
Got it. Great, great. Thank you.
And the artist and the illustrator is doing original work for Temple City as well, so we're pretty excited about such, having such a renowned author and artist assist us in providing something that's unique to the Temple City Library. Exciting.
Ms. Griffin, I just wanted to thank you for coming and just tell you that this is a long time coming, and we're very excited. I know our community is excited, our council is excited. We can't wait. You know, we're, we're very impatient. Of course, we want everything to be done. But, but you know what? Just seeing it on paper, seeing the renderings and seeing, seeing it's coming, I have to tell you, it's very exciting.
Oh, I'm happy to hear that.
I have lots of people asking me, and, you know, once we, once we start seeing the fences up around the library, it's going to get even more exciting.
Yeah.
So thank you so much for coming today.
Yeah, thank you.
And thank you for your information.
Thank you. It's an honor, really.
Thank you.
It means a lot to be part of this.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and open public comments to items not listed on the agenda. We have a Tito Corona.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, Temple City. My name is Tito Corona. I'm with LA Metro. I work for Local Government External Affairs. Some of you may know my colleague, Lillian de Losa Gutierrez. I work with her in the San Gabriel Valley to basically anything that's related to metro, the cities in the San Gabriel Valley and new mobility, which is what I'm here to talk about tonight. That's a, just to let you know that we started a pilot program for micro-mobility, shared mobility, in the El Monte Bus Station. And it started off with a small, little catchment area, and it was expanded to include the southern portion of Temple City now. So we're offering rides with, for shared mobility Monday through Friday with this company called VIA, V-I-A. And right now, these rides are free. So if you, here, the catch is that you can only take it to El Monte Bus Station or the El Monte Metrolink Station to and from and be within the, the catchment area, which is what the, the territory for this is. So one of the things that is, is actually, is really good about this is that unlike Uber and Lyft where you're not sure if, if you'll have wheelchair access, these rides are ADA compliant. You, you just have to register and make it known that you need an ADA-accessible vehicle. So for people who need some sort of vehicle to help get them to these stations, it's available for them. And again, right now, it's free. When we start charging, it'll be $1.75 per trip. This is a pilot program. It'll be reevaluated in January. One of the things to consider is with the new state California changes in the Assembly Build 5, I think, where the, I think it's a AB 5 where it requires Uber, Lyft drivers or any shared mobility driver to be an employee. Again, this is going to be evaluated in the whole process and see if this is something that we will continue with this company if they comply, or we look, go and do something else. Briefly, what the, what the air, the territory is, is from Las Tunas to the south. That's what it's been expanded to. To the west is Walnut Grove Avenue, and to the east is Santa Anita Avenue. So if you're south of that, basically, if you cross the street to Las Tunas, you're in the catchment area, and you can call a ride for free to the El Monte Bus Station or to the El Monte Metrolink Station. And you can also, when you come back, you can also take it back to up until Las Tunas Avenue or your, your home, your place of residence if it's down in that area. So we're, we're trying to do something different. We're trying to be more competitive with those rides that, those ride-sharing companies, but do it in a way where it's shared mobility. So you're not going to do it alone. You'll be with other people, but you'll be riding together and not on the road with, with your vehicle. So I just wanted to talk about that. If you are, if you would like to, if you would like to call, it's 833-917-0697 or metro.net/via to get more information. I think my time is just about up.
And can we, it's okay.
Okay.
Don't worry about that. Can we get more information, like hard copies, so that we can tell our residents? And, I mean, I'd like to become more familiar with it. Maybe after you could talk to our city manager or city clerk.
Yes, definitely.
To just kind of --
I brought some cards here.
Excellent.
Please disregard the free rides until July 30th. It's, it's, it's right now until further notice.
Okay.
So it, from what, from what I'm hearing, it may be until January. So right now, it's free rides to each station by doing this or also by downloading the app. Again, the, the name of the company is VIA, so you, you look up V-I-A on your App Store of either Samsung, what is it? I'm sorry, Android. Thank you. I don't want to say any names. Android or the other app stores, and look up VIA, download it. And again, it'll, it'll let you call for one of those rides once you register your tap card. That's another thing.
Oh, okay.
You need to have a tap card to register, but tap cards are almost everywhere. You can even buy them at the buses now.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you have a question? Go ahead.
Couple of questions. So one of them, I think you answered it. It's free right now and probably be extended until January of 2020, you said?
Yes, the free rides until, the, the whole program is until January. It's going to be reevaluated, but the free rides, I think that's the thing, that they're reevaluating every, every month or so to see if it's something that they can continue to do. But right now, it's all free.
Okay. And then if it does go, it's going to be $1.75. Is that one-way or, or both?
One-way.
One-way. So, so that'd be $3.50 for round-tripping?
Yes, yes, compared to what the competition is with Uber, Lyft, which is probably $5 to $10.
And then you indicated that part of this, part of the, it's going to cover part of our city, pretty much the entire city, south of Las Tunas, it sounds like to me.
Yes.
Because east and west boundaries are kind of beyond our, our boundaries. Is it, is it a little premature to ask about if that will be expanded, and if so, when? Or is there any?
It already was expanded to include this area before it was just more like the El Monte area, South El Monte Rosemead area. Again, we're reevaluating in January. This is how, the, this pilot program is in three areas: North Hollywood, Artesia Station, and here. It's not a competition, but San Gabriel Valley is winning, just so you know. So it's, it's getting used. So I think the more it's used, the, or the more it could be used, if we continue to expand it, maybe San Gabriel Valley will be the station that is expanded and reevaluated to, to stay for another year of the pilot program. We're trying to see what works best right now. And right now, it's, San Gabriel Valley, I think, in the last month just surpassed the North Hollywood Station as far as ridership is with this program.
And just so you're aware, you know, we're about ready to enter into a program with Lyft for our residents to transport them on a kind of a subsidy basis, and I don't know if that, that may be a competition with your program, it sounds like.
It, it may be, but, well --
I don't know. We don't know exactly, I don't know what the cost is going to be.
We don't know what's going on with Lyft either.
But that's still up in the air, so.
Right. And again, this, I think the benefit for this is that it's --
But this is going on now.
Right. It's going on now, and this offers ADA-accessible rides as well.
Right. That's what we don't have with Lyft.
I think that's the benefit. The, and the operating hours, I need to explain that, also is 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Again, depending on what happens in January when we evaluate it, it makes the, extend it to weekends and past that time.
So 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday?
Yes.
Nothing on the weekends?
Nothing on weekends yet.
Okay.
But still, it's excellent.
All right, that's still good. All right. Thank you.
Did you have any questions?
May I, may I ask?
Yes.
What is the southern limit of this area?
The southern boundary is the 60 Freeway.
Oh, wow, okay.
So from Las Tunas to the 60 Freeway.
That's great.
Okay, great. And one more question. I, I just looked up VIA on the App Store.
Yes.
There's like three or four of them. Is it low, low-cost ride-sharing or is it VIA Go Mobile?
I think it's, it's, you know what? I have the logo here on this card, so if you can match the logo.
Oh, that one, okay.
That's the one.
Okay.
And I'll give you the card. It, it looks like a little pin drop, but it's blue.
Okay, yeah. I, I found it.
That's the one.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Lots of great information for our residents.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close public comments.
Oh, no, maybe I'm not. We have Michael. And you will need, just remember, you have to fill out a --
Sure, no problem. All right. Mayor Fish?
Yes.
City Council? Lucy cannot be here tonight, so she sent me in her stead.
Oh, that's right.
I am here to announce the 10th and final Neighborhood Watch meeting of 2019. The Area 10 Neighborhood Watch meeting will be held on October 17th from 5:30 to 7:30 PM. The meeting will be held at Clemson Elementary School, which is located at 5213 Daleview Avenue. This will be the last opportunity to learn about the Neighborhood Watch 2019 topics, which include residential burglary, how to respond to an active shooter situation, how to control bleeding, and additional topics. I hope everybody who has not yet attended a Neighborhood Watch meeting is able to attend this meeting. Next year, new topics will be presented. And that's it.
Thank you very much, Michael.
Thank you.
Tell Lucy you filled in fine for her.
Thank you.
Okay, once again, is there anyone else? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close public comments. Next is consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be approved in a single motion as recommended.
Motion to approve?
Hold on. I'm looking for a, a, a recommendation to approve consent except for item F, because I have a resident who wants to, or I shouldn't say a resident, someone who wants to speak on that issue.
Motion to approve other than item F?
I'll second.
Can I get a roll call, please? Do I need a roll call? I think I do.
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Fish?
Yes. Okay, now, can, Mr. Jerry Jambezen would like to speak on item 7G, which is adoption of, I'm sorry.
7F.
I mean, 7F, I'm sorry. Is it 7? Yeah, 7.
7.
7, oh, I'm sorry. Was it 7F or 7G you wanted to talk on?
It's on the fiscal report.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's G.
That's G, not F.
Did I write down the wrong thing?
No, I said the wrong thing.
Okay.
7G.
I've been known to do that.
Sorry.
Okay.
7G is fiscal years 2018, 2019, fourth quarter preliminary budget review.
Can I revise my motion?
So, yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry. We have to revise it.
I think right now, we'd like to have the motion withdrawn, revised to be all except for item G.
All right, so I withdraw my motion, and I take another motion to approve the consent calendar other than item G.
I'll second that.
Another roll call, please.
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Fish?
Yes. Okay, Jerry, now you can go.
Good evening, Mayor Fish and, and Mayor Protem Chavez and Councilmember Mann.
Good evening.
Believe it or not, I read this whole thing.
Oh.
And I, I'm under the belief that if something is so good that you shouldn't hide it, hide it under the bushel tree, and this is what's happening in consent items sometimes. So, I just want to commend the city staff and also council members for actually just doing what the state of California should do and our federal government should do, and that spend within their means and always build up a little bit of reserve for a rainy day. So, you're doing a good job, so I just want to commend you for it. But I just don't want it to be hidden and put it into the consent agenda without speaking to it because I think it's well worth giving kudos to those that are responsible for spending within their means and not just saying, "We have all these millions of dollars, let's just use it." Okay? So, thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
That's very nice of you.
Motion to approve item G.
I'll second.
Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Fish?
Yes. Item eight, public hearing none, nine unfinished business none, ten new business none. Update from city manager.
Mayor Fish, members of the council, uh, gonna be, again, we've had a busy couple weeks. Successful Relay for Life last week. This weekend, we have the Fall Festival and Car Show. We are postponing, uh, the Bike Expo and are looking and will send out, send out a tentative date to you of April 8th for a bike ride and small Bike Expo. A little bit more expansive and will be able to do that. Got some logistical challenges with the event this weekend on that, so thanks to all that who've, who've helped out on that front. But when you can, come out to the car, we are almost sold out for the car show. We only have 50 spaces. We're at like forty, low to mid forties. So, if you have a car and you're still interested, get an application as soon as you can. We'll try to fit you in.
You know, I had a question about that from someone over the weekend. Is there an application online?
Uh, there is, there is a flyer online that has the application, so...
I don't think, I don't think the...
But there's not an online application, sorry. Yeah, so...
Okay. I think he was just, I told him just to come to City Hall.
Come to City Hall, we'll, we'll take your application. We just need some of your, all the normal insurance requirements and all that kind of fun stuff.
Thank you.
Uh, and, uh, Mr. Haworth and team and Mr. Murphy are going to come back at a future meeting. A lot happened during, and Mayor Fish has talked about this with her work with Contract Cities, a lot has happened on the state legislative front, probably more activity that impacts local government in the last year than has in many years prior, mostly surrounding housing. We're trying, and independent contractors and others, we're trying to understand the impact of how that means, but they, it will have impact. There are, at a minimum that I read, four bills that the governor signed that just deal with ADUs alone. And you've all had exhaustive discussions about what we've tried to do to have some level of a handle on local land use related, related to accessory dwelling units. And our interim community development directors had a long exhaustive conversation with you related to the zoning code as well, which we will bring back on the second meeting of November. So, be ready for a pretty exhaustive discussion about what the state is now going to be requiring of us as local entities to implement some of their housing goals. That is it for this evening, Mayor Fish.
Thank you. Update from city attorney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In discussion with the city manager today, I learned that he was going to be talking about the housing bills, so I took that off of my agenda for tonight. And instead, I just want to inform the public a little bit about what we do when we have a special session before our primary session. You, as the city council, know this, but it's good for the public to hear. The city council can meet in what's called closed session, which we tend to do at 6:30 prior to the open session regular meetings. Both meetings are held, held under California's Brown Act, which governs all local government meetings. It's also sometimes called the Sunshine in Government Act because it requires almost all of the public's business to be taken in meetings, oftentimes with notice published in the newspaper and always with an agenda published so that people can see what exactly you're doing. But it recognizes that there are some sets of matters that have to be talked about in private. There are kind of two main bundles of, of issues that get talked about in private. The first are, are individual rights and individual privacy. And then the second are, deal with situations in which the city's money might potentially be wasted if all discussions happen in open session. So, just briefly, that first bundle, the rights of individuals, the council does directly employ a few people here at City Hall, one being the city manager. Now, the city manager has the same privacy rights as any other employee, and so not every employment decision is made in public, and the city manager's employment decisions aren't made in public either. There's also, uh, under individual rights, there are some cities where the city council weighs in on certain license applications. Now, this isn't generally used in Temple City, but when a licensee, or when an applicant for a license has a criminal record and the license they're applying for might take into account the criminal record, then the council could meet in closed session to determine whether, um, that particular type of license should be given to that applicant. It allows for a, a frank discussion without the public really going, delving into the background of that individual. The second bundle of, of issues, which is far more common, are where the city's position, city's funds could be compromised if all discussions happen publicly. The first issue that often comes up is litigation, ongoing litigation or possible litigation. You wouldn't have a very good litigation position if you had to tell all of your instructions to your lawyers where the public could hear because your opponents would hear as well. The second would be real estate negotiations. Again, you can't have very good negotiations if the other party knows where you're willing to bend. And then finally, labor negotiations. You're bargaining with your unions. Just as with the first two, if you gave all of your instructions to your negotiators in public, then it wouldn't be a very fruitful negotiation for the city. In all of those situations, the Brown Act recognizes that the public funds have to be protected and the public's position and therefore those funds would be severely compromised if everything had to be done in, in public. The Brown Act does require that we come out and announce what's been going on, whether any reportable action has been taken. Reportable action would be you've directed us to close a real estate negotiation, you've directed us to come back with a contract. In the case of, for example, city manager's contract, the contract itself can only be approved right here in public, although your discussions about it do happen in private. So, that basically is what we do in closed session. We go in, we talk about those things that the state law says, for those variety of reasons, should be talked about privately. We do that and then we come out and we, we usually wind up reporting out, as they call it, right here when the room is full and people are getting ready for open session, and that gives everybody a chance to hear about what we've done. So, I hope that helps the public and the people who will watch this on streaming or, or at home, get a little bit better understanding of what we do. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Greg. Moving on to item 13, council reports regarding ad hoc or standing committee meetings? Nothing? Okay, item 14, council items separate from the city manager's regular agenda. And we will start off with councilmember Mann.
Thank you, Mayor Fish. So, just two things I want to share with everyone. About two weeks ago, I had the pleasure of attending the San Gabriel Valley Humane Society's
Oh, that's great.
95th anniversary open house. I know Mayor Protem was, was there as well. I saw him.
Oh, I wanted to go to that.
Yeah, it's, um, you know, I've, I, I told Cindy Rigney, the president, that she didn't know that. My first dog I adopted from San Gabriel Valley Humane Society, so it brought back a little bit of memories for, for me. So, well-run facility, very clean, very professional. Certainly, I think they're trying to do the best with what they have. I mean, it's not, we, if you go to some other humane societies, you could tell they're a bit more flush with cash, but they're, they're certainly doing the best they can. Their staff was great, very helpful, very informative. They had a lot of fundraising going on and it was, it was generally well-attended, at least at the time I was there. So, I, I wish them, wish them the best and I'm, I hope they do this every year or do it more often. I think it allows more people to kind of see kind of behind-the-scenes operation, get a kind of self-tour of the facilities and, and whatnot. And, and hopefully that lets more residents and other people know that they, they, they need our support. They, they need the support not just from us, but also from residents and others who, who use their services. The second thing is I do want to share that we, the Temple City Chamber of Commerce is having their annual gala this coming, or actually next Wednesday on October 23rd at 6:30 PM. It will be at The Dive Restaurant, which is in Camellia Square on the corner of Rosemead and Las Tunas. And just related to the chamber, since I'm, I'm the current liaison, a couple of things that the chamber board is working on, which I thought is, is good in, in building towards what we've been talking about a lot, is one, we formed a ad hoc or standing committee called the, um, what's the actual name for? Basically, the purpose of the committee is to build membership. And so, I'm one of the members as well as two, two board members. And one of the things we discussed is, um, doing a business walk.
Excellent.
We're tentatively planning for early December, just so we don't coincide with the Thanksgiving holidays as well as getting too close to Christmas. There really wasn't a best time, so to speak, so we're going to do our best with what, what we have. Once the details are finalized, I believe there will be a formal invitation to the rest of council to join. Cause at, at least when we discussed, one of the last walks we did was when, I think Mayor Protem Chavez, you were mayor at that time, there was a business walk with then-Senator Ed Hernandez also, I believe.
Yeah, we used a couple of stops, yeah.
A couple of stops, yeah. So, then, some board members recalled that and said that was pretty helpful and, and kind of bringing more attention to the businesses. One challenge we did highlight is, um, as we know, many of our business owners, as well as the managers who run the restaurants or stores, speak primarily Chinese. And so, I've been volunteered as the translator. But also a board member, Ed Chen, has also volunteered to do some translation as well. So, we're very grateful for him. We've also put together a, um, the chamber has put together a welcome packet. Then they've been working closely with city staff to arrange for the distribution of these welcome packets to new businesses that apply successfully or plan to apply as a business here in Temple City. And we're also going to get that translated into Chinese since we recognize that as being, one of the challenges is the language barrier. So, more, more information to come and, and when, when, when it happens, I do hope that other members of council will join us. We did particularly say that if, if the mayor could join us, that would be amazing just because you're the mayor. And all the businesses would be excited to have the mayor visit them on a business walk. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Chavez?
Thank you. Just a couple of things, just to follow up on the San Gabriel Valley Humane Society, Brian was also there. Brian Cook came and, actually, it was the first time I'd been there after all these years. You know, it, it's, uh, as William pointed out, it, it's an older facility, but, you know, it's very clean, animals seem to be well-kept. I, I, I was a little worried because I took Jane with me and...
I was going to say, and you didn't come home with any more animals?
And I didn't come home with another dog, but it was close because there was a German Shepherd there.
Oh.
And fortunately, it had already been spoken for, so I got lucky there. But I saw Susan and Jane talking over to the side. They were cutting me out, so I don't know if that was, they were trying to plan something there, but hopefully I won't end up with another dog very soon. We've got one enough. One's enough right now. But it was a nice event, a very well-attended, I think, and, you know, it's, uh, San Gabriel seemed to be having a good time, so good for them. Ninety-five years. So, hopefully, we'll be around in five more years and we'll celebrate their hundred.
I hope so. They do do a very good job.
Yeah, they do a very good job. And so, I did just, last week, I attended the California JPIA Conference in Indian Wells. I want to thank Susan Paragis and Brian Cook, our city manager and administrative services director, for attending. Hope they had a good time, it was well-attended. In fact, it was the largest conference in our history. So, and, you know, JPI does a good job. They, they, they are able to offer the conference free of charge to everyone who attends, and so that's a, a good thing for them. And, and the weather was nice and learned a lot of good things about risk management, so, so good stuff for there. And then this week, I'll be attending, um, the League of California Cities Conference, which is a little bit closer than Long Beach. And so, look forward to that. And I know there'll be a lot of, I know our city attorneys will have a booth there. JPIA has a booth. Lot, lot of, lot of vendors, they have a big expo and get a chance to see a lot of people, make a lot of good contacts and learn what other cities are doing as well. So, look forward to that. And unfortunately, I was not able to attend the Relay for Life, but I'm sure our mayor's going to talk about that. And it sounded like it was a success again, and so I want to thank everybody who participated in that and, and helped do that. It's a, obviously, a very worthy cause, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I have just a few things. I was actually at the Contract Cities Conference and we had several sessions, two sessions that really stuck out in my mind. One, and you will be hearing about this, is basically, and I know that JPIA also had it, was cybersecurity. And, you know, listening to that, it is extremely scary and basically, we shouldn't have cellphones or do anything on the internet because guess what? Someone will figure out how to get into it. There's all kinds of, obviously, safety precautions, but there are also some very, very smart people out there and some very dangerous people. And, you know, I always thought cybersecurity was trying to get money, like somebody was trying to get money, but, you know, a lot of these, these so-called pirates, they do it for just, they do it for fun. They do it for bragging rights. They want to go in there and they want to destroy these computer networks that are billions of dollars, and they, they just want to do it because they can. And that's the scary part. It's not even, you know, of course, some of them are, you know, they ask for money to fix and stuff, but a lot of them, they just want to be able to tell everybody, "Guess what? I'm the person that broke into Microsoft or broke into Google or whatever." And, you know, when you start thinking about that kind of terrorism, it's going to affect everybody. So, I know that Brian and I talked about it, we're going to be, be talking about it more, getting some more stuff out to the, to the public, but that was a very interesting, very interesting session. The other one is, the census is coming in 2020. Again, we're going to be giving out some information. It is very important to be counted. There's a, a lot of different ways they're going to be doing it. Unfortunately, they're going to be using computers and they're going to be using telephones. And for as much as we warn you not to give out your private information on those two, it's going to be challenging. So, please stay tuned so that you can make sure that when you do talk to the census, that you are talking to the correct people. If they come to your house, you are looking for the correct identification. Again, we're living in a crazy world right now. One minute, we're telling you not to talk to anybody, the next minute, we're asking you for information. So, it's going to be an interesting 2020 with the census, but like I said, we're going to try our best. Relay. We just had our Relay for Life this last Saturday, and I can tell you, it was extremely successful. We had it here in the park. Our totals right now for the entire relay is up to 58,000. It's great. It's one of the highest totals we've ever had in the seven years that we've done it. We will continue and are continuing to accept donations until December 31st, so you can go online and still donate. And just remember that all the money that you donate does go towards research, it does go towards American Cancer Society programs, and every single person is affected by cancer. It was very well-organized. We had great weather, we had great attendance, and you can see just the love and caring and support of all the people that attend, so it was, it was wonderful. I unfortunately had a really bad cold and I'm just getting my voice back, so I was a little miserable, but you know what? It was for a great cause and slept all day on Sunday, so it was good. It was for a great cause, and slept all day on Sunday, so it was good. So, um, I just wanted to thank, of course, all the volunteers that were out there with me, and of course, thank the city, because I know we're one of the sponsors, so, thank you. And that's all I have. Okay, we're gonna go, go ahead to, um, additional public comments, not listed on the agenda. Jerry?
Good evening again. I think, uh, you were much too modest. I was there for thirteen hours. I was tired.
I was there for fifteen.
You were there for fifteen, and we were both kinda dragging at the end there, but, uh...
The end was tough.
But the, uh, your team was the Real Housewives of Temple City. You raised over seventy-eight hundred dollars. So, congratulations, because it made a dent in that amount.
It did.
One correction, though, it's eight years, not seven years.
Oh, eight years, I'm sorry.
Yes, so, but...
This was the eighth year.
Yeah, this is the eighth year.
I'm thinking about before it happened.
Yeah, yeah. But it was a fun time. I'm glad that we moved it to the park and thanked the city for being a, uh, a contributing sponsor, uh, because we couldn't have done it without them, and, uh, the staff that they provided was wonderful. I mean, everybody that was there cleaning up and everything like that, so thank you for that. But, uh, it was a wonderful event, and, uh, we're gonna beat this dreaded disease. I know that you're a survivor, and I am also, so it does make a difference, so...
It does.
Uh, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Okay, and if there's nothing else, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn tonight's meeting. Thank you, good night.
You know what, I'm sorry.
Oh, you have something else?
Are we gonna talk about the next meeting tonight?
Oh, yes.
Sorry, thank, thank, thank you.
One more...
One last thing, Mayor. Uh, as part of your consent calendar tonight, you, uh, had an item that authorized both myself and the city treasurer to issue the warrants for what would have been the next meeting, but it looks like we will not have a quorum for our first meeting in November, so our next regular meeting will not be till, um, November nineteenth, I believe. So, we, our next meeting that would have been, uh, excuse me, let me just take a look at the calendar.
Yeah, November nineteenth.
Yeah, which would have been November fifth, our next regular meeting will be the nineteenth. We will publish, uh, the warrants will be available for people to review, uh, during what would have been the normal timeframe that we would have published, uh, so that for, everybody knows who we're paying in that time, but we will rat, the council will ratify that. So, there will be no meeting on the fifth, uh, as it looks today, and that's what we're planning for, and our next regular meeting will be on November nineteenth.
But actually, the meeting was gonna be on the sixth.
Excuse me, thank you again. Thank you for correcting me again, Mayor Protem. Uh, because, because of a provision that the council has, that they do not hold a reg, a meeting during an election day, uh, the meeting is carried over to that following Wednesday, so, that's it.
But there's no quorum.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We are now adjourned.